...the items listed or not listed on the agenda. Comments are to be limited to five minutes for individual or less as deemed necessary by the Chair, depending on the number of individuals desiring to speak. The public communications period will not exceed one hour prior to the commencement of the business portion of the agenda. We have 15 speakers and we will go ahead and what we will do is we'll hold the speaking for three minutes. When the green light's on, you're free to speak. On yellow light, you're still free to speak. It gives you about one minute left. And when the red light goes off, your three minutes has been met. So, we will start with our first speaker is Peter Bryan, followed by Jim Frost.
Good evening, Mayor Michael, Council members. Linda and Peter Bryan, residents of Rancho Cucamonga and proud parents of a U.S. Army Ranger. I'd like to -- I'd like to speak to you tonight, again, about our wonderful Rancho Cucamonga Animal Care and Adoption Center. And there's a few points that I'd like to make and with the City Clerk's office assistance, this is where we want it. First point I'd like to make is I'd like to introduce you to Molly. Next month is Molly's sixth birthday, or the fourth year anniversary of our adoption of Molly from the Animal Care and Adoption Center. She came to the center after a severe injury from a large, another large dog, and was brought in for surgical care and rehabilitation. And that certainly happens on a regular basis, but what's more important is that the personnel at the center took the time to find her what I'd like to think is a great home. A great home because of Linda, more so than me. But they matched Molly with us and certainly her temperament fits with our temperament. She is a wonderful pet and it wouldn't be that we'd have another great animal in our family if it wasn't for the center and certainly their personnel. The second point I'd like to make is that, let's see if we can do some of this. When the city of Rancho Cucamonga made the decision several years ago to take on this particular endeavor from the county, they certainly were interested in making it, one, the best animal care and adoption center program they could. And there were certainly, certainly certain goals that they wanted to do, and that was to have better service. They wanted certainly to increase the number of adoptions. And to the extent possible, another goal was to reduce the number of animals that needed to be put down and euthanized. And for certainly your benefit and the audience's benefit, the big dark bars that are in the center of both of these graphs are for Rancho Cucamonga. The top graph talks about the live release rate, the number of animals that go back to good homes, that certainly find a good home, that are released from the center. And so certainly you see Rancho Cucamonga, the big dark bar, is certainly the highest there and certainly provides a much better level of adoption than most of the other agencies. And the bottom bar then also...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Frost, followed by Jim Moffett.
Good evening, Chief Bryan. It's a good example of what happens when you try to cram five minutes into three. Certainly the council needs to do that. The reason I'm talking tonight is that, and I've sat obviously in Mayor Michael's position, where I have council members that may either grandstand or talk and just can't be quiet, talk circuitically. One of the challenges with freedom of the press is you're not allowed to think out loud or express your opinions or say something stupid because it'll be in press the next day. The problem with that is that suppresses your individual feelings to go underground or behind the scenes. I quote Mayor Michaels from the last minute, "My three minutes are up and I require the public to do that, and I'm going to honor my decision." I think by doing so, you're doing a disservice to your public by not allowing us to know how you feel on a given topic at any given time. The Chair's problem, of course, is at what limit do you suppress that? Three minutes isn't enough time for the public to know how you five think. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Moffett, followed by Allison Kreider.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Jim Moffett. I've been a resident in Rancho Cucamonga since 1972. Week after week, I come to these meetings and I listen and I hear. And I like to hear good stories like Peter just from the animal shelter. And I don't like to hear the bad stories. But this has been going on for a year now. It is about time that this city came together and mended these fences, one way or another, with the volunteers who were let go and the people in the animal shelter. Right or wrong, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager, get together and get this thing resolved. This has given the city a black eye. It's given the people in the animal shelter a black eye. It's given the volunteers that were dismissed a black eye. There's no reason for this to go on a year. You are adults and they have, whoever has a right to speak on the First Amendment should not be chastised. Young men and young women gave their lives for our freedoms to be able to speak this. And it is you, Mr. Mayor, and you, Mr. City Manager, to sit down and get this resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Kreider, followed by Susan Keathley.
My name is Allison Kreider. I am a current volunteer at the animal shelter and have been since 2007. It's not easy to come up here, week after week, and talk to you when sometimes some of you don't even listen. You pass notes back and forth, roll your chair over to one another, and talk when we are up here. We have noticed that you don't do this when other people from, when anyone other than people from our group are up here. It's only when you, it's only us you seem to be tired of hearing. I would appreciate your full attention and so would the animals I am up here speaking on behalf of. I hope you will hear this story because it is not about the Rancho Animal Shelter. It is about a shelter in South Los Angeles and a goal they made for themselves with the downtown dog rescue. In April of this year, the South LA Shelter made a goal that by the end of 2013, they were going to prevent 400 animals from entering their shelter. They reached that goal in only two months and by the end of June, they had prevented over 650 animals from entering their shelter. Multiply that by four and you are looking at preventing 2,600 animals from entering their shelter in one year. They did this by connecting pet owners with necessary resources and support such as vets, training, food, fencing, and low-cost, often no-cost options that will keep a pet in a home and out of the shelter. When it came to humane euthanasia for senior pets, something many South LA residents simply can't afford, they worked out a deal with local vets for low-cost euthanasia. And when low cost was still too high, the cost was covered for them through the program. Instead of a dog spending the end of its life confused with strangers, they were able to die peacefully with their family by their side. This is something that is very possible at Rancho. If you want your shelter to win awards like so many other departments in the city have, then let these four dismissed volunteers back in the shelter and set a goal of no-kill. Not a five-year goal. It's already been eight years and I shudder to think of how many animals have died while Rancho works towards no-kill. All they want to do is enrich and save animals' lives. They aren't asking for a lot and they're asking to do it for free. They were making such progress and had brought wonderful programs to the shelter. The way we are getting resistance, you'd think we were fighting for more animals to be put to sleep, but we are actually fighting for the opposite. And for that, I don't understand why we have to fight at all. Wanting to save more lives should be a no-brainer. Please do it for the animals. I also want to say, if I have time, that if we come off as negative, it's not our intention. But the fact of the matter is that sometimes the truth is negative. How can that be held against us? We're only up here speaking the truth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Keathley, followed by Dana Keathley.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate at the last meeting how you said you wanted to be positive and you're hoping we can be positive. And I really hope one day in the near future I can be. But until we're not being vilified, we just have to defend ourselves and speak the facts. We never asked to do anything more than we were doing successfully when Veronica came on board. The animal director job clearly stated that the city's operating philosophy and goals for the department are closely aligned with the no-kill. Now notice it says "no-kill," not "no euthanasia." So, we use the word "kill" because if you're putting a healthy young animal down, it's killing it. Euthanizing is a sick or old animal. The shelter supporters have had your attention all along. I know some of you are friends, you're kind of in a circle. They've probably written letters of support, they've had your ear, they, some of them have probably turned over emails when, between once friends. They might even have a petition going, you know, demanding that we not be allowed back in. But I don't know how you can judge and condemn us when you've never talked to us. You've never sat down with us. Mr. Gillis, and you set the negative tone for all this way back, way back in June with your, with your memo about our first meeting with Veronica. And I'm sure you're all familiar with the Wizard of Oz, the scene where Dorothy and everyone comes and the wizard is behind the curtain saying he's all-powerful Oz. And Little Total, he pushes a curtain back and the wizard's saying, "Ignore the man behind the curtain." So even though we've come here with records which we pay for, we don't get those for free, and if they're time-consuming, it's because they're so redacted. But even with that proof, you're still saying, "No, look, you know, look, look, I'm gonna bring up the grand jury again." Could you zero in on this? This is the kennel manager's notes. It's dated February 11th. She's talking about the grand jury will be surprised visiting us again. Make sure trash is picked up. The center looks presentable. Here's the grand jury's investigation. The first visit was open house, February 13th. That's not even true. This is what we're dealing with. We're just trying to say, "You were supposed to be no-kill." That we were trying to help, we spoke out, we're being vilified. Like the family member who, who says, "Hey, someone's being molested." And they're like, "Oh, my God. We're not mad at the person doing the molesting, we're mad at you for breaking the family code." We, we, thank you.
Dana Keathley, followed by Andra Gilbertson.
Good evening, Council, members of the public. Mr. Mayor, at the last meeting, you said that you were all about helping every adoptable animal from the shelter. But did you know that a common practice of poorly-run shelters is that they say they're saving all healthy and adoptable animals, but this is really just a smoke-and-mere's game? These shelters create their own definitions of healthy and adoptable in order to defend the killing. A shelter doesn't have to be perfect, but it does have to be transparent. Then you will have a baseline to work from. Adoptability is highly subjective, but it shouldn't be. And this is why a clear matrix should be readily available for the shelter regarding behavioral evaluations and rehabilitation plans for all treatable animals. But this is clearly lacking at the Rancho Shelter. And the reason we know this is due to the records requests that we have had to make. And unfortunately, this is just a small sampling of many of the dogs that were deemed unadoptable and killed at the center within the last eight months. And because your shelter director and city manager are telling you that they are saving all adoptable animals, which means that the shelter just has to find a way to justify the killing of animals by hence deeming them unadoptable. And sadly, temperament testing is often used to do this. In going through the records of the dogs that have been killed in 2012 and 2013, this seems to be standard practice at Rancho. Dogs that were easily able to be handled by volunteers and even placed on the adoption floor and the shelter website were then deemed behaviorally unadoptable and euthanized. There's absolutely no indication, though, of what was used to help rehabilitate these animals who were either kennel-stressed or had workable issues such as nipping, resource or food guarding, or even dog-to-dog aggression. With so many successful no-kill shelters actually do address and work through. And they do so by being honest with staff and volunteers and asking for help to work with these animals. But as you can see in the profiles here of some of the dogs, this one in particular, Sloan, and as you can see here, these records have in fact been redacted. You can see that essentially she was just dog-to-dog tested with one dog. She growled at that dog, was deemed aggressive, and subsequently killed. There was no rehabilitation plan. There's nothing in here, now to volunteers who had worked with Sloan and knew this dog. There was nothing in here to say, "Okay, maybe she didn't like this dog, but maybe we'll try her with another one." It was nope, growl, pass, done. And that's what we see again and again and again. And we know this because of the records requests we have had to make. And again, being redacted. They have to go through and recopy all these because they don't want you to see who's making these decisions. If they're professionals, like you say, and they are confident in their evaluations, why does this information have to be redacted? Thank you.
Andra Gilbertson, followed by Rochelle Palota.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman. My name is Andra. I have been a active volunteer at Rancho for four years. I'd like to talk to you about a couple things today. One is about the cats. Today, the website says there are 251 cats. Now, we don't know how many additional cats are up for foster. What is still more troubling is, looking on the website, there is one promotion, and that is a $5 Feline Friday. I would like to know what kind of plan there is to help these cats get out of the shelter. It isn't a surprise, every spring, we get cat and puppy season. There should be a plan. I know we are an open-end shelter, but it seems the sentence and the thought just stops there. It should be, "We're an open-end shelter and these are our plans, these are our promotions, these are our rescues. This is what we're going to do to help these animals get out." I am so afraid the vast majority of these beautiful cats are going to receive the ultimate gift of life, or I'm sorry, the ultimate gift of kindness that you can give an animal. And I'd like to present some of the dogs that are available at the shelter. Is this, I can't remember. Okay. Two weeks ago, I did talk about little Lydia, and I'm happy to say she found her forever home today. We want to thank, thank you, her adopters and wish Lydia and them a long and happy life. I'd like to present Wyatt. Wyatt is a beautiful, beautiful and true gentleman. He's a year and about 10 months old. Someone has worked very hard with him. His manners are impeccable. For instance, he'll run up to you and instead, he will never jump on you, he will just sit down at your side. He is exceedingly friendly and he is an all-around great dog. Then we have Rita. I don't know if you can see her beautiful blue gorgeous eyes. She is four years old and she is, her, her personality is, she's clownish. She is so much fun. And she also thinks she is a lapdog and she's probably around 60 pounds. So, she's a very big lapdog. Courtney is just one big ball of happy joy. You look at her and her tail wags so fast, her body just wiggles all over, all the while grinning her great pity grin. Frasier is a four-year-old boxer mix. He's a wonderful, all-around dog.
Thank you. Sorry. Rochelle Palota, followed by Marla Taucher. Sorry.
Good evening, my name's Rochelle. I'm a current volunteer at the animal shelter. Started volunteering last summer simply because at the time I was pregnant. My doctor suggested I started walking for exercise and I saw that the shelter needed volunteers to walk dogs and I thought, "What a win-win situation, exercise for me and the dogs." As a volunteer, I became involved in playgroups where dogs are socialized in an attempt to make them more adoptable. It was especially touching for me to see these pit bulls and pit bull mixes playing together, as I've owned a few pit bulls in the past and know firsthand how dog-aggressive they can be. But for me to be involved with playgroup and experience these dogs not being aggressive and playing and having a good time, it forever changed my perception of the breed. During one of these playgroups, the volunteers were talking about some dogs that were on a euthanasia list that the shelter had provided at the time. Apparently, a rescue group was going to come take some of these dogs, but the person that was supposed to pick the dogs up that day wasn't going to be able to get the dogs for another week. The volunteers felt the dogs didn't have a week left at the shelter and were brainstorming on ideas of what to do. I offered to help even though I was seven months pregnant and newlywed and had not got permission from my husband. It ended up being one of the best decisions I have made. Here you see Agnes. It was my first day meeting Agnes at playgroup that day. I ended up fostering her for a week. Agnes had been at the shelter for over nine months and had probably never been in a house as she cowered at my furniture, growled at her reflection in the glass, and wouldn't maneuver my stairs for the first three or four days. By the end of the week, she became acclimated to my house, which only helped her in her future. I received word that when another Rancho dog named Plumpy showed up at the same rescue as Agnes and Plumpy wouldn't navigate the stairs, it was Agnes that ran up and down the stairs and licked Plumpy's face as if she was saying, "This is how you do it." And it made me feel wonderful to know that Agnes learned about the stairs at my house in the week that I fostered her. Agnes is alive and thriving and now living in Canada. Here we have Sabrina. She can see, she's a beautiful dog, lots of character. Here, she's watching Caesar Milan. Sabrina has been at the foster for about nine months and was going to be euthanized. I had the pleasure of fostering her for over two weeks and I utilized my own personal resources to get Sabrina to her current home, which is right outside of Chicago where she's living with her two doggy brothers as seen here in this bottom picture. And we have Petal. She's a very sweet, loving dog. Petal is one of the few dogs that I could walk while eight months pregnant because she never pulled on the leash. Petal has also been at the shelter for several months and again, Petal was going to be euthanized. Again, I utilized my own personal resources and got Petal to her home in North Carolina where she's living with her doggy brothers and sisters as seen in this bottom picture. Back in May, one of the council members questioned if adoptable dogs do get killed at the animal shelter. It is my opinion that yes, adoptable dogs do get killed at the shelter. Here's an example of three. Dogs that have been adopted that were going to be killed. The only reason that I even became involved with fostering those dogs is because the volunteers of that group reached out to me. My time volunteering at the shelter became enriched by these volunteers and all of their efforts with helping me foster. Thank you.
Thank you. Marla Taucher, followed by Kevin Scarborough.
Can I start? The light's not on. Good evening. My name is Marla Taucher. I'm an animal attorney, or at least to some of you, I'm an alleged animal attorney apparently. I wanted to get something out of the way. I keep hearing this rumor or whatever it is, or some discussion, that the shelter staff is apparently threatening a lawsuit against the city for creating a hostile work environment if the volunteers are allowed back in. That sounds like something that should be addressed. And certainly, Mr. Gillis, Mr. Markman, I'm sure you can address the elements of a hostile work environment. And you could probably allay these fears fairly quickly by explaining to the city council and to others involved exactly what constitutes a hostile work environment. And it's not as simple as saying, "I don't like you," or "I don't like this person." If it were, every boss in America would be sued for creating a hostile work environment. So undoubtedly, you will explain to the council and not be held hostage to this threat. The other thing I wanted to ask is, had any of you bothered to read any of the material we've presented to you? Any of the numbers, any of the facts, any of the figures? It seems to me that rather than look at what we're saying or what we've been saying, and bring you your own records, and you can see from them that the records do not corroborate the statements that are being made. The statistics that were just put up are unverified, unaudited. They make nice bar graphs, but as my mother's a biostatistician, I know how easy it is to lie with graphs. But I think it's important that you actually sit down and look at those numbers rather than just dismiss us and say that we're not telling the truth. I mean, the truth is in the figures. And if you sit down with them for five minutes, you can figure it out. But I think what's happened is you've just, as soon as you hear the criticism, I think you just circled the wagons and said, "Forget it, we're shutting everybody out, we're not talking." All we're asking is just, can we sit down and have a civilized conversation? This could have been resolved a long time ago. It really could have been. And there's no reason that it's not. I mean, facts don't lie. They don't. And the facts are in the figures. And the fact that they have to redact so many records is already telling in and of itself. Why do you have to do that? If you're doing what you say you're doing, then you should be absolutely transparent. You should be willing and happy to give over the records instead of, you know, saying, "We can't give them to you for whatever reason," or redacting critical information such that the records that we're getting are absolutely useless in a lot of cases. You know, and I don't see why. All we're asking for is transparency and accountability. And that's what they did when they were there. They said what was going on. They didn't, they weren't making up stuff. They exercised their First Amendment right and they got kicked out for it. That tells me that there's something wrong going on in there. If they're doing what they say they're doing, they should be happy to let people talk about it. It shouldn't be a problem. These are not the people that should be cast aside for speaking their, for speaking the truth. Not even speaking opinions, it's the straight-up truth. You know, and just because you don't want to hear it doesn't mean it's not true. It doesn't make it any less true. Thank you.
Kevin Scarborough.
Good evening, council members, Mayor. My name is Kevin and I'm here to speak on behalf of my dear friend Petal, or better known to the shelter as A659659. This is Petal. She is a female, two-and-a-half-year-old pit bull mix, and she was brought into the shelter as a stray on October 6, 2012. After spending several months locked in a crate, out of public view, and leaving her with little or no chance at all of ever being adopted, Petal's time had finally ran out. This even after more than a half a dozen of potential adopters attempted to adopt her, but all of them were either discouraged or plainly just turned away. Including a resident from North Carolina by the name of Debbie Ellis, whom has given me permission to speak on her behalf. Debbie had spoke to the director, informed the director that she had serious interest of adopting Petal, but she too was turned away. So, with plans in place, on March 15, 2013, I went to the shelter to adopt Petal. After telling them I was a single male with no children, no pets, basically no life, they did allow me to continue the meet-and-greet process. It first started with a basic overview of Petal's general health, then a lady, whose name I will not reveal because that's not why I'm here today, informed me that she had to go over with me some of Petal's behavior problems. She informed me that she has, that she had, she was in charge of overseeing Petal's behavior chart. She first made it clear to me that Petal was an aggressive dog and that I had to make sure to take all precautions with her at all times. She informed me that Petal had demonstrated aggressive behavior towards other dogs, male and female. She informed me Petal had tried to attack another dog in the shelter one day. Need to remind you, I'd already seen videos on the internet with Petal walking with dogs and I saw no problems. I proceeded to ask her, "Did you witness this?" And she replied, "No," but with the exception of one time where she stated that she witnessed Petal having a certain stare. Believe me, after hearing her go on and on, I was beginning to give her a certain stare. After hearing all of this for 45 minutes, I was beginning to think I was about ready to go back and meet Cujo. I told her I was interested still in the way we went to the back to meet Petal. But instead of biting or chewing off a limb, Petal greeted me with a big sloppy kiss on the face, just as she does with everyone. Then she did ask me, "Do I often have company over?" I said, "No," but for the occasional visit from my mother. She then suggested I lock up Petal inside her room because she does not know how Petal behaves around elderly people. Well, if any of you know my mother, she surely would not appreciate being called elderly. I looked at Petal and I said, "Come on, let's get out of here," and away we went. And for those of you wondering how Petal is doing, she is doing great, living a life in North Carolina with her owner Debbie Ellis, the way it was supposed to be. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Diane Davis, excuse me, followed by Teri Jacobs.
Couple of weeks ago, some friends and I attended a council meeting. I decided to speak that night to bring attention to the irrelevance of the hateful accusations made against Veronica and the animal center. And for that, I was called a filthy biker on the Facebook page of a supposed animal rescue. It's a prime example of how that group and their biased followers find it perfectly acceptable to trash-talk anyone, not to mention making obscene gestures while a council member is speaking. How does that help the animals thrive? These were her exact words. Quote, "It was their filthy appearance, no matter what clothing they wore, and hateful speech." speech towards that group and their threatening tone towards the mayor and council members that was not only shocking but downright disturbing. The new director should be embarrassed to have people of that low caliber speak on her behalf. If she wasn't, I was embarrassed for her." End quote. This was in support of a derogatory newspaper article written by yet another one-sided journalist hoping to create controversy to sell his papers. How does that help the animals thrive? Let me tell you a little bit about us filthy bikers. We are members and friends of the Black Sheep Motorcycle Ministry. We're also members of the Patriot Guard Riders. We, along with about 150 friends, have opened the Laverne Fourth of July Parade for the last eight years. We helped organize and participated in the Two Rough Ride fundraisers for the animal center. We've raised over $100,000 for Casa Colina Hospital. This year, we celebrate our 25th annual toy run. This family event has each year donated over $10,000 in toys and over 100 bicycles and helmets to Santa Claus, Inc., which allows some less fortunate children in Rancho and the surrounding areas to have a Christmas. Ask anyone at Santa Claus, Inc. what they think of us filthy bikers. One of us has even registered with Pilots and Paws. Yes, the filthy biker owns an airplane and uses it to help the animals. But that night, we were here as Rancho residents, taxpayers, and voters. The reputations of some of the community's most prominent and active citizens have been attacked. The director of our animal center has been called a killer and a liar. How does that help animals thrive? Anyone who has the nerve to support the animal center has been called names, wrong and uninformed, like the grand jury, or liars. How does that help the animals thrive? Mr. Alexander, I believe the only thing broken is the public's trust in our animal center. Who knows how long it's gonna take to restore that? How does that help the animals thrive? They're not a solution. They are the problem. They give the "can't we just all get along" Rodney King speech, but they don't want to get along, which is evident by their continued name-calling. Until the council or specifically Mr. Gillison publicly states that they will not be reinstated, this will likely go on and on and on. Of course, when that happens, Mr. Gillison, you will be likely added to the long list of people they have trashed at these meetings. We say, "Welcome."
Thank you. Terry Jacobs. Followed by Melissa Boyd.
Good evening. I am here to speak on behalf of the animal center. And just listening to everybody tonight, it's really amazing how you can get such different versions of the same story, whether or not it's by purpose manipulation or innocent interpretation. It just never ceases to amaze me how two people can see something so very differently. There was a time when we all worked together in the best interest of the animals. Apparently, we no longer agree what is best for them. We would never impede anybody's efforts to help animals thrive, yet they have dedicated the past seven months to doing exactly that. If they succeed in causing even a fraction of the damage they set out to do, who knows how many animals will lose the chance to be rescued or adopted? The dogs and cats will get less treats and toys. A few less dogs will get professionally bathed and groomed, and already, a lot less are getting walked. Maybe even a few pet owners will follow their lead and let their dogs die in the street. I see no passion in anything they do. What I see is an insatiable need to be right. They have proven over and over that their accusations are unfounded. Well, I'm here to say we're tired of it. The decision has been made. Veronica does not want them to come back. So whatever they do at this point doesn't really matter to us because we are done listening. We are done wasting precious time and attention where it isn't deserved. I suggest they point the fingers right back at themselves and stand up and take responsibility for what they have done and move on. We have. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, council. First, I want to let you know that I did speak with Mr. Winograd, and why he no longer does shelter reviews. He can recommend somebody, and I think that that would be a good idea. Something that is of great concern to me is that our shelter is creating a culture of fear and intimidation. I've heard a lot of names being called tonight about that group, and what they really are is whistleblowers. I am aware of the fact that this council is probably under the impression that they've been let go because they've failed to adhere to policies. I'd like to show you that there is a definite difference in the way these particular people are treated with respect to whether or not they follow policies. I'm gonna show you here. This is the shelter's policy on record-keeping for euthanasia. One of the things it says right here, you can't see it very well in the overhead, but what I've underlined is that they're supposed to keep a record of the weight in the euthanasia log. I have euthanasia logs here. You're gonna notice, there's no weight. There's no weight. There's no weight. There's no weight. So, shelter employees are not required to follow their own policies. We can logically deduce that because nobody's changed in all this time, that nobody was written up, and nobody was even given a verbal warning. Because if so, at least one of those employees would have started recording the weight. So we know that it's not a matter of you must follow policy, or there's grounds for dismissal. Now, when we get to the dismissal letters, it sounds like, wow, they're doing some really egregious things, violating animal center policies, acting in an insubordinate manner, misrepresenting statements of staff and volunteers, continuing verbal attacks on staff, speaking otherwise, communicating in a sarcastic, abrasive manner, contributing to the creation of a hostile work environment. But when you actually read the documentation, "June 20, 2012, you and others appeared at a city council meeting and presented the statements concerning your problems with the current management at the center and the contributions made by volunteers. July 20, you contacted the city manager to complain about my unwillingness to greenlight a new training program." End quote. This is what they told the city manager. "We keep telling you and showing you how Veronica pretty much is trying to kick us to the curb," so to speak. Let's see. "August 17, 2012, you stated in an email to me your concerns that always seems to be pit crew, playgroup dogs that are targeted to be euthanized. You agreed to meet with me to discuss our rising tension, however you would only do it with your daughter present." Do these sound like reasons that are creating a hostile work environment? Or does it sound like people who are trying to address why we're euthanizing animals, they're coming to speak out about it, and now they've been reprimanded and fired for
Thank you all for sharing your opinions this evening. We will move on to our consent calendars.
Since council spoke and a couple of things were said, I think the record needs to be set straight on a couple of items without getting into the middle of the ongoing debate. First of all, I have not heard a word about anybody threatening the city with a suit concerning hostile work environment should anybody be invited back as a volunteer who was let go. Not a word, no documentation, have no idea what circumstance that would be. It's a speculative circumstance, so I can assure council, that's never come to my attention. I don't... To me, it's not an existing state of affairs. And secondly, while we cannot talk about the letters that were sent out that started the dismissal process for those volunteers, which evidently Nicole has read part without identifying the people, has read portions of those letters, I can tell the council that that was done carefully, and people were not let go because of an exercise of their First Amendment privileges. We're just... We're as aware of the legal bases upon which a volunteer can be separated or not separated as much as Ms. Towser is. And that whole process was done with extreme care so that these people would retain their First Amendment rights. It had to do with events that were occurring. It had to do with, as was stated just now, items of insubordination, discourteous behavior toward the public, and paid staff, numerous incidents. The basis for it, whether it's a disagreement with policy, these are volunteers who were working there, where policy is established and implemented first by the director through the staff, and they're volunteers who are obviously expected to adhere to those policies. They're volunteers to help the animals, as they say, and I believe they wish to. They're not there to go on the inside and try to hammer new policy out of the director. As a matter of fact, what they're doing right now, coming to you to suggest there ought to be different policies, is exactly where that question ought to be presented. So I gotta set the record straight after all these months. I don't want anybody in the public or council to think that we are conceding that anybody was let go because of the exercise of their right of free speech, because they weren't.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on to our consent calendars. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial.